Well, welcome to the May 20th Regular City Council Meeting. I'm glad you're here. Now, let's face it, we get 360 days of sunlight. We have to throw in a day like today just to keep you grounded. You never know nowadays whether you need suntan lotion, or raincoat, or a snow shovel in Colorado in the springtime.
On the same day.
On the same day, that's right. So, um, let's go ahead and begin. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran, here. Councilmember Gonzalez, absent. Councilmember Hammerick, here. Councilmember Hockes, here. Councilmember Meisner, here. Councilmember Turner, here. Mayor Pro Tim Smith, absent. Mayor Troutman, here.
No indication? So, please rise and pledge allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all.
Thank you. We, if you would like to talk to council, would you fill out a form there on the back there? Because we oftentimes will do the minutes for the meeting and we forget who wanted to talk to, who has spoken to council. We used to just do an open session, but I'd like to change it a little bit because we forget who had talked to us and then it's in the minutes and we get all messed up. So, if you would like to talk to council, anytime, just fill out a blank form, bring it up to Cindy, and I'll call your name. If it's an item that's going to be on the agenda, we'll wait until that item gets here. So, at any time, any council comments or events that you'd like to tell us about? Mr. Hammerick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say that this last week, there were three council members that went around to various communities to look at pools, aquatic centers, recreation centers, and a special district that was created by a developer for a housing development in terms of the recreation center pool that we're looking at here in Canyon City. It was very enlightening. We went to Woodland Park. They have an aquatic center only. It was, it looked very interesting. The city sold bonds for that, I believe, and they did not have to raise taxes, but essentially they incurred debt that then had to be repaid through taxes. And the pool up there, operating expenses were about a million dollars a year, and that's going to be, I think, just about, any pool that you have will have those kind of operating expenses. It was totally enclosed. It did include both lap swimming and exercise and a lazy river, and it was, looked pretty interesting. But, so that, we'll bring that information back to council as a whole and share that at the appropriate time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hammerick. Anyone else? Then we have, Ms. Meisner, did you have a comment? Vision Committee? We have Vision Committee meeting Wednesday night here at four o'clock, Wednesday evening here. We'll be talking about structures such as pole barns with our city building official, correct? And this morning, Mr. Hammerick and I attended the groundbreaking for Washington School in the rain. And we had umbrellas, so we were extraordinarily popular. There were areas that were for rent. No, just kidding. But, that's kind of exciting for our town. We're going to have two new schools in a year and a half, and that will cause more, I think, more notice for Canyon City, and that's, that's a great thing for our town. And then, I spoke this, this morning for the seminar for the Business Revolution. Remember when they were in town, we won, we were number six in the nation to get picked, but we welcomed over 125 business people, right, Ryan?
Correct.
For a sem, all-day seminar for the Business Revolution, and it was very well-attended because of that. So, I thought it would be a small crowd, but it was large. Larger the better. So, okay. Anything else? Let's move on. I have a proclamation, Law Enforcement Day. The Torch Run was this weekend, and that was May 18th, and so we're a little bit behind on that. I mean, I will read the proclamation, and Chief Harvey will step forward here with his socks.
I'm not wearing my socks today.
You're not?
No.
I saw a pair of socks that had wings on either side.
It didn't help.
Didn't help. Okay, well.
What's that?
Okay. I'd like to read the proclamation. This is proclamation for Law Enforcement Torch Run Day. Whereas the City of Canyon City has annually supported the Colorado Special Olympics through participation in various fundraising events, and whereas the Law Enforcement Torch Run is a community event led by law enforcement to raise awareness and support for the mission of Special Olympics across the United States. And whereas the City of Canyon City and the Canyon City Police Department share the belief of Special Olympics, that we can see achievement and self-worth realized by any individual. Whereas the City of Canyon City supports the mission of these organizations and within our community, caring for those with intellectual disabilities. And now whereas I, Preston Troutman, Mayor of Canyon City, Colorado, do hereby proclaim the third Saturday in May as Law Enforcement Torch Day in the City of Canyon City, and urge all citizens to support Special Olympics goals of showing the community at large the true meaning of sport and pure joy towards life. So, Chief Harvey, would you like to expand on that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of the community, I just really want to say thank you to the Special Olympics of Colorado for helping support our localized efforts here. We invited all law enforcement agencies in Fremont County and actually had some agencies in other counties that came to participate in our Law Enforcement Torch Run. And really, you know, I first started getting involved in the Law Enforcement Torch Run in 2002, and I kept going back every year, and the only year I'd missed was last year. This, this year, I really wanted us to come back in full force because, for me, the reason why I participated in the Law Enforcement Torch Run is that everybody in this community has value, everybody. And everybody has greatness inside of them. Sometimes it just takes someone else to help, help them see that in themselves. And so, that was one small measure for me to really be able to show my support for folks within the community that don't always feel valued. And so, our Law Enforcement Torch Run, we had the Department of Corrections, we had Bureau of Prisons, Custer County, the Colorado Department of Public Safety in Pueblo at Sem Hip, I think is actually what it's called, Star Point, and we had well over 100 folks that actually registered to run. And this is our inaugural year that we've actually done that. So, very successful. It takes around $2,000 actually to send one Special Olympian to the state games. Those games are going to be in Mesa County this year, and we raised, with just this one event, $3,264.98. In previous years, Law Enforcement Torch Runs in Fremont County only raised about 300 bucks. And I really attribute the success to our community partnerships, and so, I'd like to invite a couple of folks up to just kind of share with you their passion about this Law Enforcement Torch Run and why it's so special. So, Jan Gordon, the State Coordinator, if you could come up.
Thank you, Chief Harvey, Mr. Mayor, and council members. Thanks for having me today. My name is Jan Gordon. I'm the VP of the Law Enforcement Torch Run for Special Olympics. So, I don't know if you know, but Law Enforcement, they're our largest grassroots fundraisers for Special Olympics, and that's worldwide. But here in Colorado, Law Enforcement raised a million dollars for our programs here in Colorado. We would not be able to support the 25,000 athletes that we have here, as well as the 22 sports and the Athlete Leadership Program, our Healthy Athlete Program, our Young Athlete Program. We have so many things we're doing for people with intellectual disabilities here in Colorado, and Star Point can attest to that with some of their folks that they have there that are Special Olympic athletes that are involved. So, I want to say thank you to Chief Harvey. As he mentioned, we haven't had a lot going on up in this area, and boy, he took it on with a vengeance with his staff and with other law enforcement, six other law enforcement, five other law enforcement agencies up here that came together. And the thing I think I love the most about this is that inclusion and acceptance is what Special Olympics is all about, and I really saw that up here on Saturday with the different law enforcement agencies up here, with Star Point, with our athletes and their families. It was just so fun to see everybody coming together for a bigger cause, and you should just be very proud of your people up here, because I can't wait for next year, and to have over 100 people is huge. We have 17 runs here during the month of May. We also do, you know, other things like plane pull and polar plunge, lots of other events, but the Torch Run is our signature event, and they really knocked it out of the park. So, thank you so much for supporting them in that, and we're looking forward already to next year. Thanks.
Well, thank you.
So, I have just one other person, Mr. Mayor, if you indulge me, and that's Mary Yang from Star Point.
Thank you, Mayor Troutman and City Council. Well, you know, I stand here today, and this has been one of the most exciting years for me. I've watched this grow. Back in, we started, Star Point hadn't been engaged with Special Olympics for about 19 years. So, this past fall, when we began bowling, we already have phenomenal bowlers, so we're like, why not start there? And we, we did start there, and we showed up at the regionals and the state meets, and we were the largest group often. So, we had a huge presence, and it was just phenomenal to watch these guys. They were so excited. Just the excitement has been phenomenal. And then, in that came just a natural partnership. It's been such a strong partnership with the law enforcement agencies, such a natural, just a natural progression of support. So, that's been a really neat thing to be a part of. It's a true fine example of communities coming together to support each other. And then, we moved on to basketball this last season, and again, we were one of the largest groups at regionals. We weren't the best group of the pack, and when they paired it up, we were a little bit nervous because some of our guys had never even played basketball. And instead of going to state, we invited law enforcement to come join us just for a local game here at the elementary school that we were practicing at. And to see how far these guys have come and to believe in themselves and the athletes that they've come has been just an incredible experience, for sure. So, this past Saturday after the Torch Run, I went home on Cloud Nine because it was one of the coolest things, just to see all the agencies coming together, all of the athletes, and it just kind of really brought it home, all of the wonderful stuff that's been happening. So, we want to just continue with this. Our next journey is bocce ball. Most of us have never played that before, so it'll be a fun, exciting, new experience. So, like Chief said, you know, everybody has value, and this sure has lended that to our athletes. They are truly, some of the guys that probably didn't say two words or, you know, were very quiet are out there just cheering and yelling, and you're just hearing more boisterous, more personality I've seen in a couple of individuals. So, it truly has been a beautiful experience, and Saturday was phenomenal. So, we just hope to continue to get that community support, and we're very happy that we found these partnerships. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, the only other thing I'll say about that is I'm sure you can hear several folks out in the lobby that are very excited about being athletes this year, and unfortunately, I'm not as athletic as I used to be because I pretty much couldn't walk for two days after the Torch Run. But, you know, the thing that I remember from the Torch Run is that we had not only Star Point clients or consumers that were really excited about what we're doing, but everybody who was there, and there were families, officers, corrections officers, who were all part of it and said, "This is great. We want to do it again." Councilwoman Turner was there with us as well, and so she came out to support us. Thank you very much for being there, and I just really feel like it was a very special event for our community and something that will continue, especially this being our inaugural year. So, Mayor, I appreciate the proclamation and would love for us to be able to get some photographs with some of our athletes we're intending to send.
Sure. Is that who's out? I want to go to their party. They sound like they're having a great time. Much more to hear.
They're very excited.
Bring them in. We can, absolutely. Bring, let's come on up front here, and we'll stand back here, and bring the group in.
Yeah, and Jan Gordon has some shirts for each one of you for the Special Olympics Torch Run. And one last person I really want to mention, she's new to our agency. She just came from CBI. Her name is Billy Joe Serta, and she's our Crime Prevention Person. She has really done a phenomenal job with this, and she's, she is going to knock national night out, out of the park. She's been getting hives over it, but she's going to do it, and she's going to do a great job with it.
Where's she?
Come on up here, Billy.
Come on up. Welcome.
Hi, thank you.
Hi.
It's been quite an experience. I've learned a lot, and I've enjoyed working with these guys. DOC and Star Point have been phenomenal partners to work with, and I'm looking forward to next year. So, thank you for doing this and allowing us to be part, do something big for the community.
Welcome aboard. Let's have everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bring your group up here, and we'll get a group picture. Big smiles.
I'm going to give Jim Zoo.
One over here.
I'm going to take it.
Yeah.
Just line up next to, come up here.
It's limited to the size of Carrie's camera.
Concerned group we had two weeks ago.
No problem.
Oh, my God.
I'm going to take it.
Absolutely.
I know Erica's here.
Yeah.
May I just line up next to?
It's limited to the size of Carrie's camera.
Concerned group we had two weeks ago.
No problem.
Oh, my God.
Do you want me to?
Five strokes.
Everybody kind of stand over this way. Can we shift over this way?
You look like you're standing in the bathroom.
Excuse me? Whoa.
There's a couple shorter folks in the back that we can't see though. They might want to come on.
Yeah, come on.
That good?
Yeah, some for ladies in blue t-shirt back here. It can't see.
There we go.
Make sure nobody's hiding.
All right, everybody ready?
I'll go ahead.
Take a few here. Have a really slow camera as it takes a minute. A couple more. Okay, one more. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
I found me big. And I wanted to came to the point.
We'll wait up till I can see.
So, I might still go with that party. They sound like they're having a great time. Okay.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Could we get the chief to come back in, please?
I think he's double parked.
That's okay.
Chief Harvey, I had him ask to bring you back in because I'm glad to see you guys trying to start this again, okay? Early '70, '71, when I was stationed up in the Denver metro area, was when I first got involved with the Torch Run for the Special Olympics. We was running from Castle Rock to the Air Force Academy. Back then, they had one of the ceremonies at the Air Force Academy. And I was involved with running for the Special Olympic Torch Run for a good, I'm going to say a good 15 years. And it made me feel proud to do something for these youths that we have in there. Like you said, they're all important and everything, and all the miles and sweat that we did, we used to run the leg from Canyon City to Pueblo. Me and one of my other co-parks, we used to run the leg from Colorado City to Pueblo. And every mile that I ran made me feel proud as to why I was doing it. And maybe next year, if my health gets better, I'll join the crowd.
So, just to point out something, Councilman Hockes said he'd run from Pueblo to Canyon City. Just, I hope you all picked up on that.
Sure. Well, that's when I was younger, and I didn't have very much common sense, so we did all that.
We'd love to have you.
Thank you for bringing it back and all the success for the whole program for these very special kids. Kids are always good and special in our hearts, but these ones here have another extra special place for us. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Okay. I'm, I'm really thrilled this evening because there are parts of our government that quietly do their business and do an outstanding job, and I was thrilled to be able to recognize that. And I'd like to read what we'll be talking about here in a minute. We have the Fremont County District Court Dependency and Neglect System Reform Team with us this evening. The acronym for the program is commonly used as DANSR. They received the Excellence in Practice Award for the 2019 convening on children and families. Excellence in Practice Award recognizes teams that have demonstrated excellence in the field of child welfare. This DANSR team was chosen for taking exemplary initiative in implementation of DANSR goals to achieve positive system change through collaboratively working to have positive outcomes for the children and families in Fremont County. I'd like to ask Judge Allen to step forward and talk to us a little more about that, and thank you. Thank you all for being here, and Judge Allen.
The Dependency and Neglect Systemwide Reform Program had its official start with an initiative from the Office of Juvenile Justice, and it represents a collaboration between the Colorado Judicial Branch, Colorado Department of Human Services, Colorado Office of Respondent Parents Council, Colorado Office of the Child's Representatives. It was established to increase the capacity of the child welfare system and the dependency and neglect system to support better outcomes for children and families. And let no one tell you anything different. The official statistic is that 83% of our dependency and neglect cases involve substance abuse. I think in our experience in the last two years, we've had perhaps two cases that did not involve substance abuse and co-occurring mental health disorders. Research has shown that if you take principles from the Family Treatment Drug Court Program, and the Fremont County team, by the way, won the award at the convening, the first ever award, I think it was called the Top of the Summit Award then. You don't recall?
No, I'm there, but I don't recall.
And I was there too, and Mr. Larson and I suffer from a lot of time in the salt, so to speak. But I wanted the team to get recognition, and I asked that they be nominated for this year's award. We were one of the original pilot counties, four counties in the state of Colorado in 2014. One of the reasons we were chosen to be a pilot county is because in 2012, we were a pilot county for the CQI project, Continuous Quality Improvement. And some other jurisdictions that would go nameless had projects like redoing one of their forms. Fremont County's projects that they all completed was taking principles from the Family Treatment Court Program and implementing it in every dependency and neglect case, becoming a trauma-informed court, and working on cross-system collaboration. So, this team has been doing DANSR two years prior to implementation of DANSR. Now, other pilot counties have chosen to select a small portion of their cases. For example, one jurisdiction just west of Denver that probably runs a couple hundred cases a year has eight in the DANSR program. Denver, which has about 500 child welfare cases a year, has 10. From the very beginning, Fremont County chose every single dependency and neglect case that isn't in the Family Treatment Drug Court to be in the DANSR program. Under this system, families have better results in engaging in and completing drug and alcohol, mental health treatment. More children have remained in their homes rather than being removed and placed into foster care. More children remain permanently in their homes, and 98% of the children do not come back to the child welfare system within six months of completion of their case. You know, there's a rule they have at the state court system you need to develop, which is never let Larry have a microphone. Yet, the team knows that. DANSR values are child and family-centered, trauma-informed practice, empowering and gauging local communities, state and local cross-system partnerships, and matching services to client needs, accountability through professionalism and participation, quality of representation and advocacy by their attorneys, and delivery of effective services to families and having the courage to innovate and produce change. The original counties, just to give you an idea of the growth, was the first Jefferson County, the third district, Warfino, the 11th, Fremont, and Montezuma, the 22nd. In 2016, we added Denver, Prowers, Cheyenne, Kiowa, Baca, Arapua, and Boulder Counties. In 2017, Pueblo joined. 2018, Clear Creek, Garfield, and Broomfield, and this year, El Paso County has, has joined the program. I originally asked some people who can't be here this evening due to other obligations, Stacy Quiddick Russell, Director of Fremont County Human Services, and Tanya Sutton, the supervisor who assists us, but there are many other people in the child welfare system who are here this evening. And they were a little upset when I didn't go up with them to get the award, but there was a clear reason for that. And that is because this is their award, and this is to recognize this team for going above and beyond. Many of our attorneys are here two days a week. We have attorneys from Colorado Springs, Fountain, Howard, Salida. We do have Mr. Larson from Canyon City. His daughter, Catherine Larson, Fountain, another county attorney, Ms. Bartel, Colorado Springs, Ms. Mazuka, Salida, Mr. Redmiles comes from Salida. So, a typical Thursday for them is, you get up about what time?
I get up at 4:30.
Okay.
I leave the house at 7:00.
Okay. And what time do you get home?
About 7:00.
How many kids do you have at home?
Two.
This is just, I use her as the poster child, because this is just an example of how this team goes above and beyond. They don't know what an eight-to-five job looks like. They're never going to have one as long as they're on this team. And the support runs really deep. CASA, very important partnership, and Mika Davis is here with a number of the CASA workers. They're, they have untold value to children, families, and the court system, the success of our cases. Jackie Mitchell, one of the court judicial assistants who works with us. Mick Stumpf, Social Services, Carrie Porter, Amanda Cohen, who can at times be bullheaded, but that's okay. The participants say that lady has one of the biggest hearts they've ever seen. How she can be so gruff at times and yet be so endear to the children and families is something that escapes me because I don't find her endearing all the time, but then we've lived with this relationship for a long time. And Star Point, on kind of a PRN basis, when we have developmental issues with parents and children, are also strong. county attorney, Ms. Bartel, Colorado Springs. Ms. Mazuka, Salida. Mr. Redmiles comes from Salida. So, a typical Thursday for them is, you get up about what time?
I get up at four thirty.
Okay.
I leave the house at seven.
Okay. And what time do you get home?
About seven.
How many kids do you have at home?
Two.
This is just, I use her as the poster child, because this is just an example of how this team goes above and beyond. They don't know what an eight-to-five job looks like. They're never going to have one as long as they're on this team. And the support runs really deep. CASA, very important partnership. And Mika Davis is here with a number of the CASA workers. They're, they, they have untold value to children, families, and the court system, the success of our cases. Jackie Mitchell, one of the court judicial assistants who works with us. Mick Stumpf, Social Services, Carrie Porter, Amanda Cohen, who can at times be bullheaded, but that's okay. The participants say that lady has one of the biggest hearts they've ever seen. How she can be so gruff at times and yet be so endear to the children and families is something that escapes me because I don't find her endearing all the time, but then we've lived with this relationship for a long time. And Star Point, on kind of a PRN basis, when we have developmental issues with parents and children, are also strong supporters. We have Jenny Genschiebe here from Good Neighbor LLC, mental health, and strong focus on trauma treatment. All of these folks have trauma. All of these children have trauma. Rocky Mountain Behavioral Health wasn't able to get anyone here for us. They provide our substance abuse treatments, some treatment also in mental health. They're responsible for early assessment and early entry into treatment and delivery of services. They work very closely with us. And it's just the hardest working group of people I've ever known, and it is a very humbling honor for me to have asked for the recognition they got from the state and the recognition in their community. They, they have made a difference in the lives of children and families in Fremont County, and they will continue to do so because their heart's in it. They're dedicated. Mr. Stumpf?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Real quickly, I just wanted to show everyone, number one, the award that we received at the convening, which was a great honor, like Magistrate Allen said. One of the things that you'll notice with, with our magistrate is that he's pretty brutally honest. And we, we have to thank him for that because he's really, truly been our champion for, for this award and for the team. And so, we want to thank you very much for that. Again, I, I can't say how much I appreciate when he talked about that when other counties were looking at bringing out, you know, bringing out best protocols and with the DANSR project of just doing a few families, and his commitment that it would be malpractice not to apply these principles to all families. And we have to thank him for that. So, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and City Council.
Anyone else?
I would like to do a photo shoot.
Yes, please. Would you like to do a photo shoot, or is that possible? Wow.
They had other commitments.
Wow.
Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Absolutely.
Well, Judge Allen, I, I'd like to, from the beginning, I talked about dedicating Yeah? Yes, no? Let's do it. a new school. We're talking about future generations. And you people that do this, thank you so much for the future generations that you're benefiting. That benefits us, but the future children, that must be tough to see, but the help that you give them. But what you do, and you know you do this, you're helping a future generation. And I think that's just outstanding. And it's such a pleasure to do this. I, I jumped at the opportunity, and I'm glad you came. I wanted sunny weather, but, you know, the mayor doesn't always get everything. But again, sincerely, thank you so much for what you do. And you're that silent group that just keeps plugging away and doing outstanding things for our community. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to call another person up, which you're free to hackle at any time. Lisa, would you like to come forward and tell us what you would, what you're going to be doing this summer for our community?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Lisa Hyams, 3165 Grandview Avenue. I think I need to say that, don't I? Aren't I supposed to?
If you might.
Anyway, thank you for letting me speak for a minute. I am extremely excited to announce that the Canyon City Music and Blossom Festival will be hosting Music in the Park again this year. We've given it a new name. For twenty-nine years, I believe, the Chamber hosted Entertainment in the Park on Tuesday evenings. The Canyon City Music and Blossom Festival is picking up that tradition, and we are calling it Blossoms in the Park, a summer concert series. It's going to be June, July, and August, on the first and third Tuesday. If I'd gotten a little earlier start, we would have done every Tuesday, but I only had about two weeks to make this happen. So, I'm really excited. I've got my little phone here with everything, and I'll quickly make the announcements. The June fourth band is a great band that, unfortunately, I've got to reveal that after they give me the final okay. But you'll, you'll love them. They're fabulous. And then, June eighteenth is the Geezers. Everyone likes a little, a little oldies, a little sixties, a little seventies, a little rockin' tunes. Then, on July second, we have Title Breeze. It's a sextet, sextuplet? Sextet? What's the correct word? Anyway, a jazz group. They do a beautiful job. They played for us at Blossom in the Park this last couple of weeks ago, and they were fabulous. So, we've booked them now for their, our summer concert series. And then, on July sixteenth, we have Applewood. And for the love of Hank Holloway, it's just wonderful to have his group play again because he played every single year at Entertainment in the Park, quite an icon. Then, on August sixth, we have Lobo and Friends. We're hoping Cheryl will be able to join him. We're still waiting for a final word on that, but everybody loves Lobo. And then, on August twentieth, we have Atomic Fireballs. So, I'm really excited about it. And we invite everyone in the community to come down again on every first and third Tuesday. We will be having two different food vendors in the park where people can grab dinner and sit in their lawn chairs and, and enjoy some wonderful music. So, I invite everyone to attend, including all of our council members.
And bring your, your chairs, your beach chair, beach chairs? No.
You need to bring your own chairs.
Your own chairs?
Yeah.
What time approximately do you start?
It's going to be six PM to eight PM.
Six to eight, okay.
Okay. And thank you so very much.
Thank you, Lisa. Thanks for doing that. Glad you came.
Thank you.
Okay.
Totally lost my place.
You're going to have that guy over there go.
Oh, big guy. Okay.
Consent agenda.
I would like then to adopt, go for adoption of the consent agenda. And would you, Ryan, would you review that with us, please?
Sure. Eight A is declaration disposal of surplus vehicle. Eight B is authorizing the mayor to sign a water service contract for thirteen-twenty-eight Grand Avenue. We're actually going to ask that you pull eight C off of the agenda, so we have some more time to work on that one. Eight D will award bid number thirty-two nineteen, a diagnostic scanner to diesel laptops in an amount not to exceed six thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars. Eight E is the approval of the monthly budget summary. Eight F, receive and file the two-way independent accountant's report. And eight G is receive and file the list of bills.
Okay, thank you. Is any questions of Mr. Stevens? Mr. Man, Ms. Cochran?
Got my button in first. On A, the surplus vehicle that's going to be donated, or replaced, I guess, is it not working? Or is it, can we not have two? Do we not? I'm just curious as to why, because it seems like it's got fairly low mileage.
You know, I, I don't have a particular answer for that.
Ms. Nordak, would you like to?
Yeah, Tammy might.
I think it's, what's that?
Let's have Tammy.
Oh, Tammy. Thank you.
She's going to help you out there.
So, the police chief said that the vehicles that we are surplusing from the police department are not safe for the officers to use. And so, that is why.
So, this is a street sweeper, though.
Okay. On, well, I don't, I don't have that, those in front of me.
Okay.
But the street sweeper, I do know that we ended up replacing, didn't we end up replacing a street sweeper recently? And so, when they become older, it starts costing us too much to maintain. And it isn't normally the number of hours or the number of miles, it's number of hours on those. And so, it just becomes cost prohibitive for us to repair.
And that's the vehicle we're talking about, the street sweeper?
Correct.
Okay.
So, just, just to point out, Amanda, they, the, if you work eight hours a day for a full year, considering, you know, vacation and things like that, you generally work about a little bit over two thousand hours. So, this fourteen thousand hours is, is really quite a high number of hours for a vehicle. It's not so much the miles, it's the hours.
Well, I was just curious, because we had, at least, I, I think everybody on council got the email that there was a complaint that the street sweeping was not happening frequently enough. So, that's why I was.
And I, I don't know that it's necessarily a matter of number of vehicles. It's a matter of manpower.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Meisner?
But we still have two, right?
Well, this is the second one that's going.
No, I thought the one we bought replaced one of the two that we had.
To my knowledge, you only had one.
Only had one, I believe. Really?
Yeah. We always, I've never known us to have more than one, or one and a broken-down one, because they, street sweepers are terrible for that. Mr. Hamrick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the, on tab E, we have the monthly budget summary. And Ryan, I have a request there. So, we have the columns. We have current month actual, year-to-date actual. Rather than approved budget, which I think is a, a year-to-date, is that, is that what that column is, the third column, approved budget? Is that year-to-date approved budget? What I would. I think that's total.
That's total budget.
That's total.
That's the total budget? Right. Yes. Okay. So, what I, what my suggestion is, rather than make that the, the total approved budget, make it month-to-date budget, so that we have year-to-date actual versus essentially year-to-date a budget. Does that make sense?
No.
Do you understand?
[laughing]
Okay. So, we've got current month actual, year-to-date actual. The third column would be really neat if it was year-to-date budget.
Would, could, would, would you like to address that, Ms. Nordak?
We do not adopt the budget by month. It is adopted annually. A lot of line items are not spent equally throughout the year. And so, saying that somebody should be, you know, twenty-five percent spent in March, when possibly all of those costs are paid in January, it would, it's going to look like it's thrown over, over budget. And so, it's just a normal practice to adopt it for the entire year, show the entire budget, so you can see where we're tracking. I, we were, I think the percent is showing on there?
Correct.
And on there, it tells you that approximately eight percent of the budget is spent each month. And so, if you're looking right now for the March, through March, we should be approximately twenty-four percent spent if you were going to spend it equally throughout the year.
Yes.
And so, anything higher than that, then you're trending a lot higher. But again, it's because of, you know, some expenses do just come in sooner in the year than later.
I understand that. And that, and the percent budget reflects that, that there is a lot of movement depending on when capital dollars are spent, for instance, those, those types of issues, which is fine. And the, and the thirty-six, the percentage, percentage of budget really kind of gives us that month-to-month look also, a month, a year-to-date look. But I just thought that that third column would be, rather than the total budget, might be better, might have better information for us. It was, you know, even if it's artificial divvied up between the twelve months. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Mr. Meisner, push your button.
I look like Jeopardy here.
Okay. Now, Mr. Meisner?
See, it worked.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I would, I would suggest that item F be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the discussion agenda as maybe nine A, whatever. I just, the importance of that particular item, I would like that to be a singly approved item by council and not part of a consent agenda, if council would agree.
You would put that in your motion, then?
Is that a motion?
Well, I'll be asking for a motion here in a minute, but as long as, are you satisfied with comments? Here we go. Now, would someone like to make a motion? Mr. Meisner, push your button. No, go ahead. No, I'm, I'm just kidding.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I move that we approve the consent agenda with the modification of removing item C, which I appreciate, and removing item F. Item F would be moved to the discussion agenda as item nine A, and then the approval of the consent agenda.
Okay.
Second?
Second. Ms. Turner, thank you. Any discussions on that motion? Here we go. Now, would you, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran? Aye. Councilmember Hamrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Thank you. Let's go into discussion. Number nine, consideration adoption by, thank you, Tammy. Are you going to, you're going to hang around here?
Thanks, Tammy.
Yeah. Yeah, you should. You've got to come. All right. Thank you. I've answered all my own questions, so I'm done. Okay, consideration and adoption by title only of resolution number fifteen, serves 2019, entitled, "A Resolution of the City of Canyon City, Colorado, Authorizing a Transfer of Budgeted Funds Within the 2018 Budget of the City of Canyon City, Colorado." Would you or Ms. Nordak, Ryan, you and Ms. Nordak like to comment on that? Ms. Nordak, would you care to take that?
As part of our, in preparation of our 2018 audit, we go through the budget and make sure that every line item is within the budget based on charter. What this resolution is doing is cleaning up that and bringing us into compliance. You will see that there's a couple items. One of the items is in the streets improvement, where it was a capital item and we were moving a few hundred thousand dollars. That was for our chip sale project. We budgeted under capital, but it's an O and M item. And so, we also had to reclassify things just to make sure that when we were going for our audit and they were looking at our numbers, that everything was classified correctly. So, you will see things like that as well.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions of council?
Uh.
Thank you, Mr. Meisner.
You may have answered this, but anytime I see a reduction in street surfacing or street work, I get a little frizzy around the ears. But we're reducing on page, exhibit A, page two, I believe, under street projects. It looks like we have a reduction of four-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars, but then coming back to contract services, we have an increase of four-hundred-and-twenty-thousand. I assume that those are related to each other, or are they not?
They are related. And basically, that is where we had items that were budgeted under capital, but they were truly an O and M item, such as our chipped sale project. And so, when we're moving forward with the 2020 budget, we're actually going to start budgeting more of the items out of capital into O and M, so we do not have so many of these transfers and cleanups throughout the year. And so, that, that is a huge one in that department. So, the work was still done. It was.
where it was a capital item and we were moving a few hundred thousand dollars. That was for our chip sale project. We budgeted under capital, but it's an O and M item. And so we also had to reclassify things just to make sure that when we were going for our audit and they were looking at our numbers, that everything was classified correctly. So you will see things like that as well.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions of council? Thank you, Mr. Meisner.
You may have answered this, but anytime I see a reduction in street surfacing or street work, I get a little frizzy around the ears. But we're reducing on page, exhibit A, page two, I believe, under "Street Projects", it looks like we have a reduction of $420,000. But then coming back to contract services, we have an increase of $420,000. I assume that those are related to each other? Or are they not?
They are related. And basically, that is where we had items that were budgeted under capital, but they were truly an O and M item, such as our chipped sale project. And so when we're moving forward with the 2020 budget, we're actually going to start budgeting more of the items out of capital into O and M so we do not have so many of these transfers and cleanups throughout the year. And so that is a huge one in that department. So the work was still done. It was just for, it was chip sale, and it's not really a capital project.
Okay. Mr. Meisner, go ahead.
Additionally, there's $60,300 that looks like was in sidewalk projects. I'm hoping that we didn't move that over to operating supplies, building materials.
That, again, was some of the items that we had budgeted into a capital item, and it's more of an O and M. We did go ahead and do sidewalks, but we did not capitalize the items. And so when the auditors are looking at items charged to a capital and then we don't capitalize it, they don't, they frown on that. And so we're just trying to make sure that we moved O and M to O and M. And that's basically what it was. We moved it from capital to O and M.
You're saying O E M?
O and M. Operating, basically, operating costs.
Okay. And building materials?
Yeah.
I think, I think he's recalculating.
No, I'm not.
You're not?
I think I'm...
I think that's it?
I think. I thought there was more, but I couldn't find them. We're good, I think.
Okay. Any questions of council? Could I have a motion in a second, then? Mr. Hammack?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve resolution number 15, Series of 2019, concerning a transfer of budgeted funds within the 2018 budget. I believe that's 2019 budget. Is that correct?
2018 budget.
2018 budget of the City of Canyon City, Colorado.
Okay.
Second?
Cochran, second, thank you. Any discussions on that motion? Go ahead. I think it was the 2019 budget.
We can't be approving stuff for 2018.
It is 2018. It is cleaning up our budget to match with our audited financial statements.
Last year.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Any more discussion on that, on that motion? Hearing none, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Okay, thank you. Let's go on to have the 9A, which is the discussion that was pulled off the consent agenda. Receive and file the 2A independent accountant's report. Would, do you have a question, Mr. Meisner? Should I? Ms. Nordak, would you like to comment on that? Or who wants to talk here? I don't, by the way, so...
I'll talk. I just... The independent auditor's report, or whatever you're gonna call this report, was an explicit requirement of the 2A ballot. And I just hate to see such an important process be part of a consent agenda versus this council approving that specific report on a one-for-one basis. That's all I'm saying.
Okay. Would you concur with that?
I, that's fine.
Sure.
Yeah.
I think, well, I know what Mr. Meisner's talking about is, it kind of banners it as an, it is an important item because that was a huge part of the deal with the 2A. And I appreciate that, Mr. Meisner. Thanks, thank you. So, all right. Then I would ask for a motion in a second. That would be to approve the independent auditor's report. Ms. Cochran?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the 2A independent accountant's report.
Second.
Second, Mr. Meisner, thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Well, thank you, Mr. Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I still have a fundamental... I just don't believe fundamentally that the reports meet the intent of the ballot. I realize from a legal standpoint, we're probably meeting the verbiage of the ballot. I just don't think the information here from John Doe, when they look at it, they're gonna say, oh, okay, you spent all of your money where you were supposed to spend it. Enough said.
Okay. Any other comments on...
I just want to clarify, that's not to suggest that I think that the funds were misappropriated in any form or fashion. It's just a matter of the report in terms of how do we make a report that communicates that to the public? There's absolutely no issue of trust in terms of how those funds were spent. But we have an obligation to those supporters of 2A to show them that all that money is gonna be spent exactly what we said it was gonna be.
Mr. Hammack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to point out that we did, we did receive as a handout a copy of the actual ordinance language. And in the language, it says, it talks about the tax rate of the 1%, which shall be used exclusively for street-related infrastructure improvements and repairs. And so the two charges to the auditors were to examine that, to make sure that there was exclusivity in the expenditure of these funds that were collected by the two different rates, 2%, that was the non-2A amount, and the 1% that was the 2A amount. And that, sometimes it's a little bit hard for the general public to understand, but basically, the findings of the auditors, that they found no exceptions with the statutory language essentially that we, that the voters passed to establish this tax and to govern its, that tax money expenditure. No exceptions. That means we did good.
Okay. Thank you. Any more discussion on that motion? Thank you. Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Nay.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Number 10, consideration of municipal code update, ordinance 13, Series 2019, for a second reading and adoption by title only, entitled "An Ordinance for the City of Canyon City, Colorado, Authorizing the Sale of the City Property Located Within the River Station Subdivision, Exemption Canyon City, Colorado." Would you care to comment, Mr. Acting Administrator?
This is the second reading for the sale of the Santa Fe Depot at 401 Water Street. And nothing has changed from the last time that we, this came before council.
Thank you. Any questions of our administrator? None? I have a motion in a second. Mr. Meisner, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor and council, I move that we approve ordinance 10, Series of 2019. No, it's not the 13.
13. You have your own agenda, eh?
Obviously. Mr. Mayor and council, I move that we approve ordinance 13, Series of 2019.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Ms. Hammack, thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Okay, let's move on to number 11. This, again, is a second reading and adoption by title only of ordinance 10, Series 2019, entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City, Appropriating Additional Sums of Money For the City's 2019 Budget." And could we have any comments from our city administrator?
Again, no, no changes to this ordinance from the last time. It was before council. We apologize that it did not come back sooner. Should've came back first meeting in May, I believe.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stevens, any discussions? Any questions of our administrator? Ms. Meisner?
These are additional monies?
These are...
For the 19 budget?
Yes.
We're gonna increase that budget due to these incomes.
That is correct.
Mr. Meisner, push your button. No, Mr. Meisner, go ahead. I'm just kidding you.
Mr. Mayor and council, I now have my act together. I move that we approve ordinance 10 to the, a series of, ordinance 10 of Series 2019.
Second?
Second, Ms. Cochran, thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Thank you. Mr. Acting Administrator Stevens, do you have any report for us?
I do. We, May 11th, we had the Correctional Officer Appreciation Day. It was a very successful event for all the DOC and Bureau of Prisons, you know, showing recognition. I just want to thank a few folks. You know, the Canyon City Elks came out and helped cook. And, you know, there were a lot of volunteers from the Elks. Catalyst Church provided the bounce houses and obstacle course. Fire it up Pizza donated their time while they were there. And then city staff, Jim Johnson, Denise Warren, Kristy Gotham, Rex Brady, and the Parks Department. So appreciate everything that everybody did to make that inaugural event a success. We also, you know, 2A Water Main Projects, those projects are starting to finish up on Fourth Street. That should finish up this week. And they will start on Myrtle after school is out next week. And then Main Streets at 12th, Main Street at 12th, they'll start up again, that area, after school is let out. The Via Ferretta up at the Royal Gorge Bridge opens to the public on May 24th. And then this past weekend, we had Zia Rides up at the Royal Gorge Bridge. That was a very successful event. We had over 200 registrants for that event. And it looks like they want to come back next year, so we're very excited about that.
That's great. Wow. Ms. Turner? Thank you.